Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, May 11, 2015. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon?
Present.
Martin, Polika?
Here.
Piana?
Here.
And Mayor Colter.
Here, thank you. Councilman Martin's mother passed away unfortunately, and he is up in big city with his family. And so, I would entertain a motion to excuse his absence.
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
My support.
All right, any discussion on the agenda? Marnie?
Councilmembers Polika?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Moving on to presentations, it looks like we have a couple of presentations this evening. Presentation A is one that we're proud to do every year, and as Frank comes up to the podium, do you want me to read this first, or do you want to speak first? All right. So, this is the City of Ferndale proclamation for Poppy Week. The week of May 10th to the 16th, 2015 will have special national significance because of its designation as National Poppy Week, a period when the emphasis is on raising funds for a broad project of unquestionable merit. Americans enthusiastically support this annual tribute to their war dead, which provides funds for the rehabilitation and increased comfort of those deserving disabled veterans of all wars. And the sale of this flower of remembrance again will be handled by the American Legion and the VFW veterans with its auxiliary units. Now, therefore, I, David Colter, Mayor of the City of Ferndale, officially declare and proclaim the week of May 10th to the 16th, 2015, as Poppy Week in the City of Ferndale, and urge all of our residents to support this sale, which has great significance for the living victims of war.
Thank you. And if I may put in a small statement here, well, just about the aspect of it here and there. In the past 10 years of the war, of the past war, over 60,000 men and women have been wounded. Most of these veterans have returned home. Many returned to the hospitals to make their lives livable once again through surgeries, prosthetics, and many needed psychiatric help, they need our help too. The medical costs to our veterans are covered, but things that we take for granted, simple things like toothpaste, socks, stamps, shaving needs, mouthwash, books, and much more are not. In this economy, it is easy to forget others, but we cannot afford to forget our veterans. These wonderful people, just like all of you before them, put in their years of service to protect our borders. 100% of this money that's collected from the poppy sales is donated to the Veterans Hospital, which are in Grand Rapids, Upper Peninsula, and in Detroit. May is the month that we recognize all our veterans, but especially in the past and the future of the ones that are coming back home. Be it the ones in the hospital or the rehab centers, be it the ones currently fighting the war in Iraq and Afghanistan, most have returned. And for the ones who have already given their lives for our country, and who left families in need here at home, May ends with Memorial Day, which is on the 25th. This is where we recognize all our veterans that have passed away, and again, we honor that by a Memorial Day parade on that morning. But on May 14th, 15th, and 16th, we celebrate Poppy Day. May 14th is actually the Poppy Day Drive will be out in full force. That is designated as our annual Poppy Day, but we'll be out this whole weekend to listen to the buffs. Our chance to do our part for those who are doing and who have done their part. Please reach deeply in your pockets this year. We desperately need your help. Show your fellow veterans that you care. Do all you can with my things and especially their things. God bless our veterans, and God bless our country. What is my name?
Thank you. Yes, why don't you come on up? I know you like to sell them to us, and we appreciate the opportunity.
Every day we start with you guys.
Yep.
That's why I'm well advanced, let you know, put that in the resolution. The 20s are coming out everywhere now. Thank you.
And Frank, I want to thank you too. You do this every year, tirelessly. You don't get paid for this, but I know this is a passion of yours, and I really appreciate that you do this.
Yeah, I do stand there in Naima, Woodwork.
Yep.
Those who see a lot of them, I've been doing this for almost 35 years.
Thanks, Frank.
And our veterans really dearly need to play help.
Wonderful. Appreciate it.
Anyone in the audience? I'll be around.
Thank you. And on the 14th, you'll be out on the street?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, good. Excellent. Oh, yes, you may. Sign, seal, and deliver. There you go.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Frank. All right. Our next presentation tonight is the observation of Friday, May 15, 2015, as Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and the week of May 10th to the 16th as National Police Week. And Chief, are you going to come up and speak to that item?
Thank you for the time to mention this. Congress and the President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the week for which it falls into, this week of this year, is May 10th through the 16th, is National Police Week. It is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of their law enforcement agency, and all the members of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. I ask council to call upon all the citizens of Ferndale, and upon all the patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe Friday, May 15th, 2015, as Police Officers' Memorial Day, in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service of the community, or have become disabled in the performance of their duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. In addition to that, Your Honor, tomorrow at 10:00 a.m., we will have a short ceremony, and we will lower the flag to half-staff at City Hall here tomorrow. We'll have the youngsters from Roosevelt Primary School lead us in the pledge, a short few comments, and we'll fire a salute as well. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you, Chief.
Do we need a motion? I see that there's one in the packet to...
I move the council to observe Friday, May 15, 2015, as Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and proclaim the week of May 10th, 2015, as National Police Week.
Support.
Moved by Piana and supported by Polika. Is there any discussion? I guess, I would just say one thing. Chief, I know that we do this every year, and we're happy and proud to do it every year. This year, it seems for me to take on a little bit more significance. All across the country, there has been a renewed focus on the work of police, and unfortunately, on the misdeeds of a small few amount of police. And I think that while it's important that we hold everyone in law enforcement accountable for their actions, I think it's equally important that we recognize the vast majority of the honorable people who serve in our police departments and put their lives on the line for us every day, and this year in particular, this is, I think, a poignant time to remember that.
Well spoken, Your Honor.
Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. That is adopted. Moving on now to call the audience. Call the audience is your opportunity here in the audience to address council on any issue that's not on the agenda, because you'll get a chance to talk on that issue when we get there. But come on up, you have three minutes. Give us your name, your address, and three minutes on whatever you'd like to address the city on this evening. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address? Call the audience.
Richard, 324 Kensington.
Good evening, sir.
A lot of checks went out today for water.
It did.
Overcharged it was at.
Yeah.
I'd like to see something go along with that. It would probably be beneficial to see some apology letters for being overcharged.
Well, okay.
I've seen a lot of people discussing this you don't see. Today was a check day. Everybody got their check, and there's a lot of controversy going on about it.
We're actually going to have a statement about that later. We don't believe you were overcharged, sir, and we're going to...
I don't know if I was or not, but the letter I got said that I was overcharged, and I got a check. But anyways, she had a cable, talking about the results of the voting and everything.
Yes.
Oh, the town hall meeting.
The town hall meeting that we had, our city manager.
I turned my TV completely up as high as I couldn't, I couldn't understand anything.
Oh, I appreciate you letting us know that. Thank you, yeah. But it seems like we might be having that issue again tonight. Our technology could be more advanced. Thank you for pointing that out.
I don't know how to determine who gets what, but I went to the city, and I was just wanting to get some information, and they just give you a piece of paper that says, "Get hold of this lawyer on the internet," and I'd like to talk to a human being, you know. And there's a lot of people that are up in the air about what went on with this and everything, even though they got a letter. It's still, they're wondering quite a bit, so it'd be nice if something came about about it.
Thank you. And because it was a legal matter, we have to follow sort of the procedures of the court. It was a court decision of how it proceeds, and the answers in your questions. You're right, it is a little frustrating. They need to go to the email address that you were given in that letter. We're not the court, we're not...
I know, but when you were...
We were being sued.
But you're still my city leaders, and I'd rather talk to you than some lawyer I don't even know or never seen.
No, I appreciate that, sir, and we will address that later in this meeting as well.
I tell you here about the councilmen and mothers around the mothers of the issue.
Thank you, appreciate that as well.
Good thing, you.
Thank you, sir, thanks for coming. Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Very good, how are you?
Should we go together?
Please.
Can we get six minutes?
We'll see. Probably.
I think Jim better go first. He's better at this than I am.
I don't know about that, Brian. You had to remind me that I forgot to put my contact information on the piece of information. I don't know how you saw that, but you did. Anyway, my name is Jim Kasha. I live in Norwich, Ontario, Canada, but I was born and raised in Detroit.
All right.
And, go ahead and introduce yourself, Brian.
Yeah, my name is Brian Colfer. I live in Sterling Heights. My address is 2167 East 14 Mile. I'm on the, excuse me, I'm in the Citizens Advisory Committee for the Regional Transit Authority in Macomb County.
Okay.
And so, Jim and I are here to talk about mass transit.
All right.
In fact, I want to, if it's okay, I want to invite, you know, everybody out tomorrow to Campus Marches, because we're having our kickoff presentation to the public, to explain to the public why we need regional transit, and it's from 11:30 to 1:30. So, if, you know, any of the council members, if anybody here in this room would like to come out, come out and talk about regional transit, because we definitely need it in this region. So...
Okay, so what we'd really like to talk about is Michigan State Fairgrounds as a regional transportation hub. We seem to remember that a couple of years ago, and I guess some members of this council and yourself, Mayor, were aware that you passed a resolution to the Michigan Land Bank on February 7th of 2013, requesting the very things that we're coming here asking you for. You had the foresight and the leadership to do this, and to request that the land bank really do the right thing at the fairgrounds for the region. Unfortunately, I don't know if you've been following this, but your resolution was, or the letter was dated February 7th. That was the same day that the land bank decided to move forward with the Magic Plus proposal, and, you know, they signed a purchase agreement on October 2013, so nine months, they basically ignored everything you asked them to do, and have since then as well. And now, we have a development agreement. We still have a plan that was presented to the community on March 18th of this year, which basically is no different than pretty much their conceptual plan from the very beginning proposal, with a total disregard for the transportation aspect of this strategic regional property. So, you know, we'd like to hand out the letter back to you and the drawing. Also, a suggestion on how maybe the RTA and the region could own that property, and maybe do a reconsideration of what the state's planning on doing here, since they don't seem to want to do the right thing. I happen to be born and raised in southwest Detroit, and today I was at Southwestern High School, where Mayor Duggan and Governor Snyder announced a development for that piece of, strategic piece of property, 70 acres. And I couldn't believe it when I heard it. I drove three hours to get there, not knowing what I was going to hear, but I heard them say it was a done deal to be given this property to somebody else, but they realized after some other people brought in a new proposal, that maybe there's a better thing to do for the city and the state. And, you know, it's exactly what's happening at the fairgrounds. So, we need this collaboration of all the, you know, we had the Michigan Suburbs Alliance right here at Ferndale, and, you know, where are they on this leadership to bring the communities together? We need transparency, which a fairgrounds proposal never had. We need some predictability. Kirk Steidl, that M.D. Director, was down there today at southwest Detroit. You know, they've been silent on the transportation aspect of the fairgrounds property. And just...
And you are approaching your six minutes, so...
Just one minute, I apologize, but it's a very important issue for the region, and I think we're making a serious mistake. We have a new planning director in the city of Detroit, and I think if Ferndale asks him to take a look at this, and maybe we can do some regional cooperation, Ferndale, Hazel Park, City of Detroit, Ann Arbor. I'm also part of the State Fairgrounds Development Coalition, although I am not speaking on behalf of them. We did a presentation to the RTA CEO, Michael Ford, on April 30th, just a couple of weeks ago, and, you know, I think at first he was a little hesitant to hear what the people had to say, but I think afterwards he realized that this is a key part of any kind of a regional transportation, if that's truly what we want. So, please, Mayor and council members, I know some of you are here, you know, and know about this issue, please do what you can, and we very much appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, thanks for coming out.
And, oh, and the meeting tomorrow, the kickoff, is for another planning, regional planning, to come up with another regional plan. We don't really need another plan. We've had several. We don't really need the money. That's, plan and money is not going to get us regional transportation. We need the regional cooperation of all the communities. That has to come first. If you don't have that, then don't waste $2 million more coming up with another plan. And I build transit systems for a living, so, I worked at SEMCO as a co-op student when Carmine Palumbo was hired, so...
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. And we are proud to have not only a transit expert, but this week, an award-winning transit expert on our council. Melanie Piana won the true award.
Forward motion, most effective public servant.
Most effective public servant for advocating for transit, is sitting right at my side.
Better to do this.
So, yes, you have a receptive audience. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you both being here.
Anything else?
Oh, yeah, sure, if you want to give them to our clerk, or she'll grab those from you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, I want to overlook that.
Important issue, I totally agree. Anyone else that would like to address council this evening?
Again, Mayor, I have a question to ask. Four years ago, the city here brought our old building, American Legion Building on Liberty and Naima.
Yes.
And recently, this past year, I noticed that it's up for sale. And when Mayor Covey was on the chair, the agreement we worked with, and now I wanted to see what we can do verbally or have it written down, there's two plaques on that building there, if you recall, in front of the building. One was to recognize the World War I and World War II veterans.
Yes.
Then, the one that we put in back then, 20 years ago, was for the Korean and Vietnam vets. Now, if the building is sold to these individuals, whoever buys it, I'd like to see, well, if they demolish it, if they decide to demolish it, I would like to see somewhere in line that they contact me, so I can somehow save these two plaques, and hopefully find a new home for them, which will be on the memorial on Naima. So, I would say with April, maybe we get together. This was verbally done back then, that we agreed, but...
No, I promise you, we will save those. In fact, I'm wondering why we couldn't just remove them now. It's not going to be used as an American Legion hauling anymore, can we?
Yeah, we'll make sure that they're either, building stays will figure that, either way, we'll make sure that they're removed or salvaged.
Yeah, and I also sit on the Ferndale Historical Society Board, and we're well aware of those two plaques, so any transaction, and I know April and I have been talking about the transaction and the sale of this building.
Yeah, when I was a member of the historical board there, at that time, we discussed it too, but like I say, a lot of it's verbal, and this was the scary part about it. So, we want to make sure that this will be taken care of without a new mayor comes in, who knows when, and, you know, it'll be news to him or whatever. So, if the city sells it, please, you know, let me know, or if you do take it out, we'll find a home for it for the time being, instead of up in the city yard.
You have our promise, Frank. Absolutely. Yes, yes, sir. Anyone else would like to address council this evening? Oh, I know what this is about. Yay! Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ed Allison. This is my wife, Kevin. We live on Seraphova Street here, Jacksonville, Ferndale. We're here on behalf of the Ferndale Memorial Day Parade, and specifically for the Michigan Fallen Foot Float. Actually, this is our seventh year to be involved with the parade, and we really proud of that. For those that don't understand or don't know what the foot float is, it's a parade event that is made up of the community. And this poster represents a fallen military person from Michigan or involved in Michigan military. We have, from the Afghan and Iraq war only, there's so many, otherwise we couldn't be, we couldn't be selected without. We have 260 of these posters now, and so there are 260 possibilities for members of the community to walk in that parade and honor these people that decide. I've been involved with it for, I guess, five years now, Kevin, maybe a little bit longer, and the emotional response that we've received while doing this is just amazing, and that's why we keep doing it. And so, we want to remind the community about this, and if you feel like you'd like to be involved, you can go to our website, which is on the next poster I'm going to give you, and, actually, just with the memorial parade, you can see it listed, and you can just show up and call, and we can certainly use your help.
Why don't you read, can you read the website that people can go to if they want to sign up? It is a wonderful, wonderful...
It's the FerndaleFootFloat@gmail.com.
Very nice. And it's really nice that you have Sergeant Leach's sign there. He was from Ferndale, special place in our heart here, yeah.
His parents live just down the street from us. Secondly, this Memorial Day event obviously celebrates the ultimate sacrifice given by the military personnel from our community. But it's still going on. Afghanistan and Iraq is still using our people. That shouldn't look quite that way, but we're still involved. And I'm a veteran from the Vietnam era, and...
Thank you, sir.
It's very dear to my heart. To see the people that come back from those conflicts honored and respected and understood, you don't go into those kind of situations without being forever changed. And in my opinion, a lot of the attention given to veterans now is not great, but it's a lot better than it was when they came back from Vietnam. And I want to make sure that that awareness is there always. In light of that, we are, along with the Ferndale Library, a sponsor, a sponsoring showing of the movie, it's a documentary called The Bird's Nest, at the library. The first one's tomorrow night at 12:00. We're going to show it here on the 19th. And it is a documentary prepared by a father and son team, Mike and Carlos Lottich, a father and son who embedded with the troops in Afghanistan for a year. This movie is a document of the time they spent there, and it is the most compelling and realistic movie or documentary ever seen in regards to the Afghan conflict. And we want people to see this, to understand what these people do every day. And it's not just, you know, sitting at a tent and running out and doing a little mission, it's every day. So, we're excited about showing it and looking forward to it being there. One of the parents of one of the soldiers in this documentary is on our committee, Kevin Mott. His son is the captain in this documentary, and the story is amazing. Of course, Kevin is obviously very, very much involved with it. And so, we think we can make a difference in the awareness of what our military folks are doing through the show of this movie.
So, can you give us the dates and times again, just so folks know, and they can get out and see it?
It's going to be 7:00.
7:00 tomorrow?
And then, same time on the 19th.
On the 19th.
And there'll be showings at Oakland University and two or three other venues we're working on between now and Veterans Day.
Is there a charge?
It's free of charge.
Free of charge?
Free of charge.
Wonderful.
And there's snacks.
Well, of course, I'm there closely. But anyway, just wanted to invite anyone you might know that would be interested in knowing what our folks really do, to be...
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much for sharing both of those.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else like to address council this evening? All right, if not, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are those items that council considers routine, and we enact in one motion unless someone from council removes one of the consent agenda items. Let me read the consent agenda for you now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular and special meetings held April 27, 2015. Item B is the adoption of a resolution proclaiming June as Gay Pride Month in the City of Ferndale. Item C is the approval of a license agreement as submitted with crave for outdoor café use on the pedestrian alley, and to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement and authorize the city manager to approve the café fence. Item D is the approval of a license agreement as submitted with Dino Drop Inc. for the extended outdoor café area use on the pedestrian alley, as submitted, and to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Item E is the approval of the First Amendment to the My Life Health and Wellness Center Interlocal Agreement, effective immediately, as submitted by our Director of HR. Item F is the approval of the purchase and installation of wireless access control system for the restrooms at Wilson Park and Garbutt Park, presented by Howlett Technologies, for $5,636, to be withdrawn from account number 101-805-775. Item G is the approval of the Memorandum of Understanding and $2,500 contribution to join the Street Lighting Coalition, and that the expenses be charged to the general fund street lighting account. And finally, H, the approval of the bills and payroll as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review by the council's finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Piana and supported by Polika. Is there any questions or discussion on the consent agenda? Neither by council or anyone in the public, for that matter. All right, if not, Marnie, would you call the roll?
Councilmembers Lennon, Polika?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to our regular agenda. Item A is the consideration of a zoning amendment to add the use variance. And Derek, you're going to introduce that item?
Hey, Your Honor. Good evening.
Good evening.
We're here tonight, the next, actually, two agenda items are items that have been under consideration by the Planning Commission staff and... under consideration by the Planning Commission staff and with the ordinance that is next to the DDA for quite some time. The first one is an amendment that actually the CED staff and myself brought forward to the Planning Commission some months ago to discuss the possibility of amending the zoning ordinance to include the option for a use variance to be considered by the city's Board of Zoning Appeals. Currently, the way the ordinances are structured, the Board of Zoning Appeals can only deal with a variance if it deals with or is requested for a dimensional change, a setback, a height of a building, width of a lot, something that is directly related to a measurement or a dimensional requirement. Michigan State, the Enabling Act for Planning, also allows, under certain circumstances, if approved by the city, the Board of Zoning Appeals to consider a variance in use within a zoning district. And in short, what that allows is for, if you have a specific zoning district, let's say a retailer or commercial zoning district, under very specific criteria as defined in the ordinance, you can, or the BZA could, allow a use from a different zoning district in that zoning district. Let's say, an office use and an industrial district, if those criteria were met and the Board of Zoning Appeals felt it was appropriate. Over the last six months or a year, we've had a couple of occasions where it's been staff's opinion that that tool may have been an appropriate one for use on a couple of projects. And in discussions with both the city attorney and the Planning Commission, we recommended a change in our ordinance to allow that. Previously, or currently, the zoning ordinance specifically does not allow those to be considered by the zoning board of appeals.
Could you give us examples, just of...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
We've had one instance, I won't mention the name of the business, but a longstanding business in the city of Ferndale located on a major commercial corridor. When they first were located there, their property was zoned industrial. In the zoning ordinance changes of 2010, the city rezoned that property to mixed use. The mixed-use zoning district no longer permits contractors' offices as a use in the mixed-use district. In essence, we created the nonconformance for the business. As an existing nonconforming business, they are allowed to operate in perpetuity as long as they don't expand, buy any adjacent parcels, or grow on the property. In looking at that site, it is not appropriate in staff's position to rezone that property back to industrial to eliminate the nonconformance. It's also not appropriate, most likely, again, in our opinion or our recommendation, to do a conditional rezoning, because you would change the underlying zoning requirements of a parcel just to allow that one use. It is, in our opinion, appropriate that the applicant at least have the opportunity to request that use variance. It doesn't mean that it would be granted, and it doesn't mean that the Board of Zoning Appeals would agree that all the criteria are met, but we do believe that there should be the opportunity to ask the question, that in essence, there's really no reason for us to tie our own hands and take that tool away from us when in certain very specific circumstances, again, it may be appropriate. So, that is one of the examples we've cited and why we started this discussion in the first place. The Planning Commission did review the ordinance amendments and hold a public hearing, and is recommending that city council change the zoning ordinance to allow the use variances to be used as a tool going forward. And obviously, we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I think this is a win-win situation, Derek. I know throughout the course of the years, there's been a lot of, basically, it's just been rubber stamped, no, can't do it, you know, but this, now, at least they have the opportunity to go in front of the board. Now, the bonds still have to be posted and go through the normal procedures.
Yes, if an applicant were to be granted a use variance, all the normal requirements still apply. They would still have to go to the Planning Commission for a site plan approval, all the dimensional requirements still need to be met, any construction or building code requirements still need to be adhered to.
Right.
So, the only thing this would change would allow them to make that request to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Beautiful. Other questions or a motion before we have comment? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I can make a motion. I move that we amend the ordinance number 1087, section 24-427, to allow the Board of Zoning Appeals to consider use non-dimensional variance requests.
Support.
Moved by Lennon and supported by Polika. Other discussion, questions, comments on this item?
Just a comment that, as I sit on the Planning Commission, I think the Planning Commission members were very contemplative about the process and making sure that there were still checks and balances that were appropriate for the role of the PC as well as the BZA. So, I think that was, all those questions were satisfied, and as Councilman Lennon said, this adds more flexibility, but yet still has all the checks and balances.
Right.
To make sure it meets what we want for Ferndale.
Good. All right. Any last comments or questions before I call the roll? Marnie?
Councilmembers Polika.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Moving on now to regular agenda. Item B is a consideration of a zoning amendment to adopt the Transit Oriented Development Overlay Ordinance. And Derek, you're going to introduce that as well.
I am. This is one that's been under consideration and discussion by both the Planning Commission and DDA for some time as well. As city council is aware, over a year ago, council and the Planning Commission adopted a transit-oriented development policy. For several years now, the city's Master Land use plan has made transit-oriented development a priority for redevelopment of both the Woodward Corridor and our downtown area. And the zoning ordinances were amended in 2010 to remove restrictions and impediments to that type of development being created along the corridor and in the downtown. Over the past couple of years, the city's reviewed and/or approved or seen built a couple of developments that it felt weren't in keeping with those design standards or those goals of both the TOD policy and the city's Master Land use plan. In response to that, Planning Commission and staff has drafted what we're referring to as the TOD overlay zoning district. What this ordinance does, if adopted, is it requires properties within the overlay area, which amounts to, or is, we included a map in there, but it's Woodward, basically, from city border to city border, and then the CBD district along east and west Nine Mile. And what it would do is, the specific concerns of the Planning Commission and DDA have been the construction of single-story retail-type development within the downtown area. What this ordinance does is it requires anytime there is new, an expansion of an existing building or new construction within the overlay district, it requires that new construction to be two stories, unless otherwise approved by the city's planning commission. There is some criteria for them to consider other uses. The expansions of the existing buildings would have to increase the buildings by 25% or 3,000 square feet, or new construction, obviously, would be subject to this ordinance. It's pretty straightforward in that any new construction that meets those criteria would then have to be two-story or 25 feet. And that would, it's designed to help implement the city's Master Land use plan and to gain the type of development that both the Planning Commission and the DDA and city council envisioned when it passed those ordinances over the last few years. So, this ordinance has been vetted on several occasions by the Planning Commission, discussed at considerable length. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing at its last meeting in which all of the affected property owners were noticed. There was no noticeable objection to the change in ordinance, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this ordinance unanimously to city council. So, you have that in front of you, and we are here to answer any questions.
Comments, questions, and then, or a motion before we have comment?
I don't have any questions.
You have a motion?
If passed, obviously, it takes, is enforced immediately, but how does that affect negotiations with current properties? For example, the Pizza Hut location. How does this ordinance...
Bullseye question, isn't it? We would have to look into that. It depends on, and I don't want to get, I would allow the city attorney to comment as well. That Pizza Hut project, or the new project that was proposed in that location, did appear in front of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did conditionally approve the site plan, but to this point, the applicant has not followed through to provide us revised site plans demonstrating conformity with those conditions of the Planning Commission. So, we would have to have a discussion internally, at what point does that new site plan as approved or conditionally approved by the Planning Commission become vested? And that would be a question, if passed tonight, we would have to have a conversation with the city attorney to determine. There are no other projects in the pipeline that I feel would be affected in the middle of this process. That is the only one that's an example of that.
That's why I couldn't think of another example, so, sorry.
And obviously, it's a discussion we will have in short order with the applicants and the city attorney, and if there's any questions or concerns, we would either have to come back to the Planning Commission or city council. And they do have the option, if they are not vested, to come back and ask the Planning Commission under certain criteria to waive that requirement as well.
Talk a little bit about the need to go all the way from border to border on Woodward. So, because I guess, and I am not a planner, and my mind is, makes perfect sense in your central business district, which is why it's in the central business district on Nine Mile. But, you know, when you're all the way out to the border of Pleasant Bridge, when you're down by Eight Mile, it's not quite as, I want to say urban, our entire city is urban, but it isn't the same district. So, just talk a little bit about how that would impact those areas.
Trade a thought, and there was a lot of discussion at the Planning Commission level on the geography of it. And at the end of the day, the recommendation from the Planning Commission is to stay consistent with the Master Land use plan and the TOD plan, with both of them identify the entire Woodward Corridor as being transit-oriented. If, and hopefully, based on some of the conversation we've had here tonight, hopefully, in 2016, we'll see a millage path, and we will reap the benefit of some type of mass transit along the Woodward Corridor. And this type of development is appropriate for anywhere directly adjacent to that transit corridor. So, we think planning in advance of that and starting to see that change, if we do see properties assembled and buildings taken down, that it is appropriate for them to be this height at a minimum throughout the entire corridor, or at least from the Planning Commission's point of view.
How does this impact historically typical one-story buildings such as your food chains? Wendy's, if they want to redo their building, or mobile gas station, or collision shops, which are typically historically one-story?
Again, that's why some of the waiver abilities were put in for the Planning Commission, but in most part, if they take down and rebuild, they're going to have to meet that height requirement. It doesn't mean they can't operate, it doesn't mean they can't have a non-traditional, non-corporate type structure that accommodates their uses. There's fast food and other traditional one-story uses that have been built in urban centers, you know, throughout the United States that don't meet the traditional building footprint of maybe their franchise. And we'd have to look at it when those come forward.
Just a little bit, but to the extent that there would be a renovation proposed of an existing building, that's accepted or exempted from the requirement that they increase the height of their property. So, as long as the existing building is not increased, as long as there's not a new building, or the existing building is not increased by more than 25%, it does not have to comply with the criteria set forth in this overlay district.
Okay. Well, just, I mean, a couple of years ago...
So, renovation, a renovation wouldn't, as long as it's a renovation of that footprint, wouldn't have to...
Well, just a couple of years ago, we had the McDonald's on Woodward that did a major renovation.
Taco Bell, was it?
Well, yeah, the Taco Bells were knocked down and rebuilt, so those would be two examples of...
Would it be your hope that in the future, they would build some sort of a two-story structure and have the Taco Bell on the first floor, or is that something that you would envision would get an exemption? Just curious.
You know, the fast food, yeah, we can talk about that specific example. If they raise the structure and start over from scratch, the ordinance would require them to come in and meet the new ordinance requirements. I mean, in some way, shape, or form. They could seek some type of relief either from the Planning Commission or the BZA if necessary, but under the current ordinance, they would be responsible for the same type of buildings, or same dimensional requirements as any other building owner along the corridor.
Fast food chains have lots of experience building in multiple-story buildings all over the world, so we're not asking them to do something that they've never done before.
Oh, yeah.
And I think we would be as creative as Birmingham with their Tim Hortons, where they were all about the building form, and they still allow the drive-through, and was a second story too? And they covered the drive-through so that the form of the building actually complemented the environment in which it was in. So, I think we would be just as creative with those case-by-case scenarios as they arrive. But since these, most of the fast food places have already revamped their places, I think we're safe for another 10, 15 years. You can still get your Taco Bell in a single-story building.
Thank you.
Wendy's could use some work.
And there is no relief from council, right? They would have to get the variance from the Planning Commission or the BGA.
Yeah, if it falls under the waiver criteria of the ordinance, it would be the Planning Commission for their consideration. If it was a variance request, it would go to the BGA like any other dimensional request.
Is there a motion?
I'm, oh. I move that city council adopt the ordinance and associated zoning tax amendments to establish the Transit Oriented Development TOD overlay district with the following findings, and direct staff to update the city's zoning map as listed below.
Support.
Moved by Piana and supported by Polika. Any other questions or discussion?
I'd like to provide a little bit of context, if I may. This request for the Planning Commission to look at an overlay district clearly came from residents and business owners who were saddened by the fact that some new developments on Woodward was not more than one story. I think the intentions of the master plan and the TOD plan were all to encourage and provide the most streamlined process for developers to build more than one story. It's clear that the parcels along Woodward can be two stories, because we have two stories dotted all along the corridor. They're just not congruent, right? So, it's hard to sometimes say that there's single stories here, and then further north, there's a two-story standalone building surrounded by a parking lot. So, with that request coming in from residents and business owners to take a look at, how can we maybe prod a little bit more than encourage, and encourage, this height overlay proposal was considered by the Planning Commission. And then, another development came in, Pizza Hut, and it's clear that they were more interested in your typical strip retail building that could be in any community anywhere in the USA and have no context design sensitive to Ferndale's unique character, let alone have a second story on top of it. And it's clear that Woodward can have a second story building, because in 2007, the current Camborn Woodward parcel had a four-story proposal building before the housing crash. So, that type of a development can certainly be built and have a return on investment that is healthy for a developer and a property owner. However, in this particular case, that property owner chose to do a single story. And also, development proposals were coming to the Planning Commission with fake-looking second stories, where a really tall, what's it called? What's the technical term of the...
Parapet.
A parapet, thank you, of a tall parapet. So, it looked like second story, but really was only one. So, this is the premise of how this came to be. I was really encouraged with the DDA doing outreach meetings to property owners along Woodward, and there was no issues. And they were like, yeah, two stories can be managed because we already have it. The sensitivities that I think the Planning Commission really applied here was making sure that we weren't causing a hardship on an existing property owner building that was only looking to do a small retrofit, thus the 25% floor area, or 3,000 square feet, or whatever is less. So, I think we balanced it fairly well. So, that's the background.
Well, I'm very supportive of this. As I mentioned to Melanie months ago, when she mentioned to me that you were having this discussion in the Planning Commission, I said, why stop at two? Why not make it three? I believe in density development. It's the way to go, and I wouldn't be opposed to having it even expanded onto Eight Mile, of having two-story and three-story development forced onto Eight Mile as well.
I suggest you bring up that comment in the master plan update process.
Yeah, and I'm sort of intrigued to hear that there might yet possibly be a sliver of an opportunity at the old Pizza Hut site, maybe, because that certainly got a lot of our attention. That would have been, it would have been a very appropriate thing to have in place then, but better late than never. Any other comments?
No.
Questions?
It's good to deal.
All right. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Piana?
Yes.
Lemon?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. That concludes our regular agenda. Next item of business is call to council. I see the police chief back there. Anything else for the good of the community, sir? All right. Jenny, anything from the HR department this evening? All right. Derek, you've been up a couple of times, but anything else? All right. How about the recreation department? Yes, finally, someone's taking me up on it. Jill?
Good evening. Just have one quick announcement. Coming up on June 6th is our annual bike rodeo, put out in conjunction with the police department, the fire department, and the Rotary. It will be at the high school from nine to one. The police department will be on-site issuing bike licenses and doing bike inspections. The Rotary will be on-site handing out helmets, and I believe the fire department is also bringing their fire safety house, so invite everyone down to the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Jill. Kara, anything from the community engagement area this evening? All right. Joe, how about from your neck of the woods? Yes.
I'd like to just touch on what the gentleman had discussed earlier today about, in the meeting about the Wolf settlement agreement.
Yes.
Yes, residents should be receiving their disbursement checks. They were sent in the mail, I believe, at the end of the week last week, so they should be getting them. I'd like to remind residents that these mailings and the reimbursements and how they were tabulated were all handled and managed by the class action attorney, Kick'em Hanley. If you have any questions about your reimbursement amount, how they determined that, all of that was determined by Kick'em and Hanley. You can access them at their website, which is www.kickhamhanley.com backslash class action. And since that is a mouthful, a mouthful, the city also did put a little story, and we pinned it to our own website, which is www.ferndalemi.gov, a little simpler. And on the front page, under news, you'll see an article on the Wolf lawsuit. It's just going to summarize what you might have received in the mail this week. And there's direct links on that story to Kick'em and Hanley's website, as well as a link to a resource page that city staff did prepare for the public for an education on the Wolf settlement agreement, what the settlement agreement was about, what the terms were, and how you know if you were part of the class action or not. Just to touch base on the background as a reminder, there were two subclasses. You were a member of the class if you were a person who paid for water and sewer at any time after January 20th, 2013, until the settlement agreement, which was in March. Secondly, you, the second subclass would be if you were a person who paid for water and sewer at any time after January 20th, 2008. Those were the two subclass conditions. If you were a member of any of those, you would have been eligible for reimbursement check and automatically considered by Kick'em and Hanley, and factored into the equation. One popular question has been about renters, and if you were a tenant, how you might go about receiving a reimbursement. That will be, again, completely handled by Kick'em and Hanley. Kick'em and Hanley went on whoever would have been on the water and sewer account. So, if the property owner was on the water and sewer account, you should contact Kick'em and Hanley and work with them to find out what answers you might need.
And Joe, just briefly, because it's a very detailed case, it was very complex, and I know you're not an attorney and I'm not an attorney, but to this issue of overcharge, the essence of the suit was that we weren't overcharging our residents, but we were putting fees on the water bill that should have been on the tax bill, so that the amount was, so could you just speak-
Yeah, it's not a question of overcharging. It was a question of how the city recovers the disputed costs in the case. There were two costs. One would be for debt service on the 12-town drain of which the city of Ferndale is a member. Since we are a member of that, and since we do use that drain system, the city is responsible for a portion of the debt service on the construction of that drain. The second issue would have been how the city were to recover costs for the actual use of the drain by our residents. The city had included that in the water and sewer rate calculations. The settlement would have argued that the city should have included that on the tax bill. Ultimately, the settlement agreement agreed upon will be moving a percentage of those water and sewer rate charges onto the tax bill, and the city's portion of the debt service onto the tax bill.
And a component stays on the water bill as well?
Yes.
A percentage remains on the water.
So, a component of the fees that we were charging on the water bill, we were told, should have really been on your tax bill. Not that the fees weren't appropriate, that they shouldn't have been on the water bill. They should have been on the tax bill. So, you're getting a refund on what we had collected as part of your water bill. But be forewarned, it's going, that fee is now going to be placed on your tax bill. So, in my opinion, instead of spending that check down at the market, you might want to put it in your tax account, because at the end of the day, most residents, most residents should see no gain or loss from their taxes to their water bill. But there's going to be fees removed from your water bill and placed on your taxes as imposed on us by the court through this lawsuit.
Yes, that is correct. Similarly, it was a question of the definition between tax and fee, and that really is what this boils down to.
Yep.
But again, I'd like to reemphasize that it has nothing to do with an overcharged scenario. It's just the definition of terms.
And I would also say that even though the terms of the agreement are to contact the law firm, Rick, to your point, if you want to call City Hall, we will, we do have humans that will talk to you. So, it's, we don't want to not talk to you. We'll tell you, as much as we know, just know that this case isn't really in our hands. The court is really dictating how things get determined, but I do want you to know that you can come and talk to Joe. He can tell you as much as he can as a non-lawyer, and so we're happy to talk to you. It's just that, you know, we're sort of dictated by the terms of the agreement.
I just want to bring your attention, because there are a lot of people that don't have the right opinion of what happened, and they do think they were overcharged.
Yep.
And by me coming here today, a lot of stuff- I'll bet you it was just a little bit too late, but I'll bet you a lot of those people cashed their checks and took the money and run.
Well.
Now, you're saying that this was a tax oversight?
No, no, that's not what we said.
It's not an oversight.
That's not what we said.
The fees were appropriate.
It had gone on the taxes, but it wasn't, and it was always cautious of overcharging.
All right. Well, anyway, my point is, the fees were appropriate. The courts never argued that we weren't charged, we were charging for fees that we shouldn't be collecting. They were arguing, or the plaintiff argued, that we were collecting them on the water bill instead of your tax bill. That is the gist of this, very simple gist of a very complicated lawsuit.
A lot of people from the city aren't lawyers. Like, you're not a lawyer. You may have trouble understanding what's going on in that.
Yes.
It's confusing.
Yeah.
It is.
It is. The important thing to know is that the costs are real and they remain the same today as they did last year. We still are participants in the Coon drain system.
Yep.
We still use that. We still are obligated to pay our portion of the debt service on the construction of that, because we are users of that system. Secondarily, we also do consume that system, so since we are users, we do owe for our use of that system. So, the costs are real. They remain the same. It's just how they're passed down to users.
And you might add, Joe, that there are other cities that are involved.
We're not the only city being-
They were doing the same thing.
It is a 12-town drain, so there's other cities that are, that have charged similarly to us.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. I appreciate that. Chief Sullivan, anything from the fire department this evening? All right. Lloyd, anything from DPW this evening?
Just wanted to make sure council is aware that we have been relocating the structure from St. James that was donated to the city, and we're in the process of installing it at Oppenheim Park, and we expect it to be open to the public and for play probably within a week to 10 days.
Nice.
Let me know.
Ready to get on the swing? All right. Marnie, anything from the clerk's office?
Well, we had a little election last week.
Yes, we did.
And I just want to thank the 50-plus election inspectors who work a 6:00 AM to, till it's all done kind of day, and we, on that note, we are looking for more volunteers. We have so many dedicated people who help us, but we're asking a lot of them, and we would really like to increase our inspector pool so that some of those folks don't have to work such long days. So, you can get that application on our election page on the city website, and, or stop down at City Hall. We'll be happy to touch up with one. Our next election will be in November. And we want to thank everybody who turned out to vote. And we had a 22% turnout, which is not too bad for a May special election.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question through the chair?
Of course.
A number of people have mentioned to me that they'd like to volunteer, but they can't do a whole day. You do have part-time positions, correct?
The more people we get, the more part-time shifts we can offer. We would love to be able to have, we'll take people for however long they can work. It's a little more puzzle pieces to fit it all together, but yeah, we're absolutely happy to talk to people who can do partial days, and we'll get to talk to them.
Great.
Thank you. Good. Good point. All right. April, anything for the city managers on?
Sure. Just one thing, a friendly reminder that due to the Memorial holiday on May 25th, we will not be having a normal council meeting that day. It'll be moved to that following Tuesday, May 26th, so just the day after Memorial Day rather than on Monday, May 25th, same time, 7:00 PM.
Yep. Great. Thank you. Dan, anything from the legal room today?
Hi, Your Honor.
All right. Councilmember Lemon?
I just want to thank Marty for a wonderful job, her staff, her Lanko staff, but did a wonderful job on the election. And I know Greg's going to talk about an event this Saturday, so I'm going to defer my comment to him.
Well, all right. Then Greg, why don't you go next?
Before I mention that one, I also want to thank Marty and all the staff for another great election day, and thank all the voters for coming out and voting for both Prop Two and Prop Three, and getting those through smoothly. But I do want to bring up the big event this Saturday, Clean the Ferndale Up. Registration is at 8:00 AM. You can register online at www.cleantheferndaleup.com. But 8:00 AM is registration or check-in, depending on where you register. We're going to be focusing mostly on cleaning up the parks and doing some work in the parks from 9:00 AM to noon. Please bring your own gloves, your own working gloves. All of the materials will be provided by the city. Also, Sakura will be here to collect those items you can't put at the curb, such as tires, electronics, oils, paints, batteries. So, this is the week to do your spring cleaning in your garage and your braid basement to get all those items out, and bring them between 8:00 AM and noon on Saturday.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilwoman Piana?
I'm just echoing everybody else, and thank you to the voters of Ferndale for passing Prop Two and Prop Three for better streets and parks. I look forward to providing these amenities that our community members have expressed that they want. And Marnie, thank you for a seamless election.
Thank you. Very good. Just a couple of things. This Thursday evening is the annual fundraiser for the Fern Care Free Health Clinic in Ferndale. It's a great organization, and this is where they raise the majority of their money. So, if you're free Thursday evening and you want to support an awesome cause, go to the Fern Care website. But the dinner, it's going to be a strolling dinner this Thursday at 6:00 at the Dawson Great Lakes Museum on Delisle, which is a new venue for that event, and it should be a nice time this Thursday. And then, finally, as April mentioned, two weeks from today is Memorial Day. Please come out and support our parade. It is the longest continuously running Memorial Day parade in the state of Michigan. It's a wonderful parade, and it concludes over on the Mall on Liburnoy with a few remarks and a tribute to those who have given their lives for our country. So, happy Memorial Day to everyone, and please try to come out and visit our parade. And with that, our meeting is adjourned.